The Honorable Vice Governor Adeline M. Angeles Presiding.
The 24th Regular Session of this Sanggunian is now called to order. Requesting Honorable Dindin Office Mercado to kindly lead the invocation, to be followed by National Anthem, Marinduke March, and the Board Members Creed to be led by Honorable Mercy Rehano.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Amen. Holy Father, God of our yesterdays, our today, and our tomorrows, we praise you for your unequalled greatness. Thank you for the year behind us and for the year ahead. Help us in your new year, Father, to serve our people each day and every moment. Help us that love could be with us and we could know you, that we could share your love with others, we rejoice in the world we love into being. Thank you for another year and for new chances every day. We pray for peace, for light, and for hope, that we might spread them to others. Forgive us for falling short this past year. We leave the irreparable past in your hands and step out into the unknown new year knowing you will go with us. We accept your gift of a new year and rejoice in what's ahead. In Jesus' name, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Amen.
I kindly raise your right hand. PBM LP Creed, I am a provincial board member. Given the mandate to serve my constituency through responsible... responsive and effective legislation. Provide dynamic leadership. Promote and maximize the delivery of basic services for the general welfare. Under a regime of the truly consultative and participative democracy. I impose myself the supreme obligation to perform and carry out the functions prescribed by law unselfishly and with utmost dedication. Thereby becoming a genuine catalyst of change in my locality and our nation.
Requesting our good secretary to kindly call the roll.
Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes, Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, Honorable Antonio L. Mangukang III, Honorable Bernadino Office Mercado, Honorable Melgabal R. N. Cabo, Honorable Mercedes Rehano, Honorable Danilo Arred, Honorable Ismael D. Pilim, Honorable Jose Neril L. Mangol, Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada, Honorable Lorena Rosales. Madam Presiding Officer, with the nine members of the board present, we have the necessary quorum for this morning's session.
With the presence of nine members, the Presiding Officer declares the presence of quorum.
Magandang umaga sa ating lahat at sa lahat ng ating mga katuwang din sa serbisyo publiko ng pamahalaan palalawigan. Our session is also recorded so sa ating ding mga constituencies sa luab at labas ng lalawigan, magandang magandang umaga po at maligayang 2023 sa ating lahat.
We have the necessary quorum and we can proceed with the order of business, but in consideration of an urgent concern as requested by the governor, what is the pleasure of the floor leader?
Madam Presiding Officer, before that urgent concern from the governor, we would like to inform the body that we have a very important guest today in the person of our newly crowned Miss Tourism Philippines. And for that, Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we suspend the rules so that we can accommodate her. I so move.
There is a motion to suspend the rules by the floor leader and it is hereby suspended.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize our newly crowned Miss Tourism Philippines representing the province of Marinduke?
Recognizing our new full-fledged and leveled-up beauty queen from Marinduke, Ms. Diana Rose. The floor is open for nasan na si Sir Louis. You're okay dyan? You want to join Ms. Diana Rose? Yes, Ms. Diana, do you have any message or anything to say to the honorable members of the board?
Good morning po sa ating lahat. Andito na namang po ako at tulad po ng naipangako, uwi po ako ng may titolo at may corona. Isa pong napakalaking... Sobrang proud po ako na isa pong Marindukenyang nakapag-uwi ng isa sa pinakamalaking titolo sa kakatapos lamang na Miss Tourism Philippines. At nagpapasalamat po ako sa buong Sanggunian ng Sanggunian Palalawigan sa walang walang sawa at walang kapantay na suporta na ibinigay sa akin. At hindi po ako makakakuha ng ganitong corona at titolo kung walang tulong ng ating mahal na Marinduke. At gayun din po ang pasasalamat ko sa aking handler. Kung wala din po siya ay wala din po ako sa katayuan ko ngayon. At isa po itong blessing at magandang pamungad ng 2023. Inaasahan ko po na patuloy niyo po akong sosuportahan sa panibagong journey ko. Hindi pa po dito nagtatapos. Expectedly po ngayong year din po, gaganapin niyong Miss Tourism World International naman po. Hindi na po Marinduke pero sobrang proud po ako na nairepresenta nairepresenta ko ang ating lalawigan ng Marinduke sa national pageant. At inaasahan ko po na susuportahan niyo pa rin po ako sa international pageant ko po. Nagaganapin ngayong year sa Spain po o kaya po ay sa Italy. At gayun na lamang po 'yung labis na pasasalamat ko sa inyong lahat sa support ay namang po.
Maraming salamat, Ms. Diana Rose Jamolin, the newly crowned Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022. So, any message from the honorable members of the board? Yes, Honorable Leva?
Madam Presiding Officer, gusto na nating ipangako kay Mama Mulin ng ating suporta sa kanila, sa kanya. Kung kinakailangan sumama tayo sa España at sa Italia, gagawin natin.
Yes, Honorable Leva?
Since Madam Presiding Officer, we are on a suspended rule. May I also further suspend the rules to accommodate and consider proposed Resolution Number 2013-128? I so move, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is a motion duly seconded from the Chair of the Committee on Rules that as part of the suspended rules, we accommodate the first agenda under proposed resolution in consideration of the already presence of Ms. Jamolin. What is the pleasure of Honorable Leva?
May I ask the secretary to please read the title of proposed Resolution Number 2023-128? May I ask the beautiful lady to sit down first before...
Proposed Resolution Number 2023-128. Resolution congratulating Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin from Benavista, Marinduke for being crowned as the Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022 in the recently concluded Miss Tourism Philippines Coronation Night held on December 30, 2022 at Vigan Ilokosur and recognizing her contributions in the promotion of the province of Marinduke as a worthwhile tourism destination authored by Honorable Antonio L. Mangukang III, Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism Development and Cultural Heritage, co-authored by Honorable Bernadino Office Mercado Committee on Women, Family Welfare, and Gender Development.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the author of the said measure, the Honorable Antonio L. Mangukang III?
The honorable gentleman from Magpo is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer and for our floor leader. Here's the proposed Resolution Number 2023-128. A resolution congratulating Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin from Benavista, Marinduke for being crowned as the Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022 in the recently concluded Miss Tourism Philippines Coronation Night held on December 30, 2022 at Vigan Ilokosur and recognizing her contributions in the promotion of the province of Marinduke as a worthwhile tourism destination. Whereas, Miss Tourism Philippines is one of the biggest and prestigious national pageants in the Philippines which does not only focus on beauty, talent, fitness, and poise, but also promotes arts, culture, tradition, tourist attractions, and products in all areas of the country. Whereas, Miss Tourism Philippines is also found to be an effective tool in propelling socioeconomic growth in the country by helping the government in the promotion of the tourism industry, both locally and abroad, to become one of the leading tourism destinations in the world. Whereas, in the recently concluded Miss Tourism Philippines Coronation Night held on December 30, 2022 at Vigan Ilokosur, Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin, who hails from the municipality of Benavista, Marinduke, bagged the title of Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022, which is among the major titles being confirmed by the said competition. Whereas, aside from getting a major title, Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin also won the Best in National Costume Award, which only proves that she is deserving of the Miss Tourism Philippines World crown. Whereas, Ms. Jamolin has indeed brought pride and honor to the province, not only by showcasing the true Marindukenyang beauty and ingenuity, but also by bringing into both the national and international limelight the authentic Marindukic culture, arts, traditions, and products, as well as its natural wonders and exquisiteness. Therefore, in consideration of the foregoing premises and on motion of yours truly, resolve as it is hereby resolved to congratulate Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin from Benavista, Marinduke for being crowned as the Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022 in the recently concluded Miss Tourism Philippines Coronation Night held on December 30, 2022 at Vigan Ilokosur and recognizing her contributions in the promotion of the province of Marinduke as a worthwhile tourism destination. Resolve finally that copy of this resolution be furnished to Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin. Copy furnished to the municipal government of Benavista for their information.
Thank you, Honorable Mangukang. So, that is the content of the resolution. Will the proponent formalize the motion? Yes, Honorable Leva first?
With the permission of the members of the board, would the good gentleman yield to some amendment?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
By adding and providing cash incentive amounting to 50,000 pesos and recognition of her honor and prestige given to the province.
What's the response of the proponent?
Amenable po ang author, Madam Chair. She deserve it.
Very much willing. Also, will the proponent also consider including in one of the resolving clause the important recognition, a sort of resolve further to recognize the important contribution of her competition team led by Mr. Louis Mangoy and their team that leads to the success of the team? So that we also recognize her and also the people behind the successful undertaking?
Very much willing, Madam Chair.
Okay, so with that, what is the pleasure of the proponent?
Madam Chair, I formally moves for the adoption and as amended of a resolution congratulating Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin from Benavista, Marinduke for being crowned as the Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022 in the recently concluded Miss Tourism Philippines Coronation Night held on December 30, 2022 at Vigan Ilokosur and recognizing her contributions in the promotion of the province of Marinduke as a worthwhile tourism destination and providing 50,000 cash pesos incentive, Madam Chair.
There is a motion. Any second to the motion by Honorable Mangukang duly seconded, by Honorable Leva, Honorable Mangol, Honorable Rehano? Any objection? The chair hears none. Thus, the amended resolution congratulating Ms. Diane Rose Jamolin from Benavista, Marinduke for being crowned as the Miss Tourism Philippines World 2022 in the recently concluded Miss Tourism Philippines Coronation Night held on December 30, 2022 at Vigan Ilokosur and recognizing her contribution in the promotion of the province of Marinduke as a worthwhile tourism destination and providing 50,000 cash incentives is now approved. The session resumed. Honorable Leva?
Madam Presiding Officer, we are now at the reading adaption of the minutes of the preview sessions. For the first minute, I move that we defer the reading of the minutes of the session dated December 9, 2022 and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to the amendment, corrections, clarifications from the members of the board. I so move.
The motion is approved as it is coming from the Chair of the Committee on Rules?
Inviting members of the board to have some corrections on the minutes of the December 9, 2022 session.
Any correction from the floor?
Since there's no correction, Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we approve and adopt the minutes of the session of the 22nd Regular Session dated December 9, 2022. I so move.
Any second to the motion of the floor leader? Duly seconded by Honorable Caballes and Honorable Rosales. Any objection? The chair hears none. With that, the resolution adopting the minutes of the December 9, 2022 session is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we defer the reading of the, we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the session dated December 16 and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to the submission of corrections, amendment, and clarifications from the members of the board. I so move.
The motion is coming from the Chair of the Committee on Rules is approved. We will dispense with the reading of the December 21 minutes without prejudice to the correction from the floor.
Inviting Madam Presiding Officers, Officer, members of the board who have some corrections, clarification, and amendment to the minutes of the December 16 session.
Yes, any correction from the floor from the honorable members of this August body for the minutes of the December 21, 2022 session? December, ah, December 16. I stand corrected. December 16, 2022 session. Any correction? The chair hears none. What's the pleasure of the Chair of the Committee on Rules?
Madam Presiding Officer, since no member of the board signifies this intention to submit corrections, clarification, amendment, I move for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the 23rd Regular Session dated December 16, 2022.
Any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Caballes. Any objection? The chair hears none. Thus, the resolution adopting the December 16, 2022 minutes of session is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the December 21 Special Session and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to submission of corrections, clarification, and amendment for the members of the board.
The motion is approved. Proceed.
Madam Presiding Officer, inviting members of the board who have some clarification, amendments, and corrections with the minutes of the first Special Session dated December 21, 2022.
Any correction from the floor for the minutes of the December 21, 2022 session? Yes, Honorable Rehano?
Just only clarification. Since the floor leader said for clarification, I will just only clarify whether the graduity is already given or what is approved or what is the situation of this that we have approved?
Madam Presiding Officer, can we approve first then we will go on the matters arising?
Yes, Honorable Rehano, let's finish first the correction of the minutes and then after that, let's tackle the requested clarification in the matters arising from the minutes.
Since there's no member of the board who seeks some clarification, amendment, and corrections, may I move that we adopt the minutes of the first Special Session dated December 21, 2022.
There is a motion. Any second to that motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Mangol. Any objection? The chair hears none. Thus, the resolution adopting the minutes of our December 21, 2022 session is now approved.
For the matters arising from the minutes, may I ask that we recognize the lady from Santa Cruz?
Recognizing Honorable Rehano, pakipaulit po 'yung pong inyong clarification being requested.
Okay, isalam pong clarification regarding the resolution granting to grant the graduity pay to all qualified COS and GOs worker for the provincial government of Marinduke for FY 2022. Isalam pong clarification kung this is already nagbigay na po baga ito or what is the situation of this approved resolution?
Okay, the gentle lady from Santa Cruz is requesting for an update with regard to this resolution. Can the Chair of the Committee on Human Resources, Honorable Leva, shed some information?
Can I seek the assistance of the secretariat, especially the administrative officer of this matter?
Requesting the input or update from our good secretary, Sir James?
For the information of the board po, 'yung po kasing graduity pay, lumabas lang po 'yung Administrative Order Number 3 is 28 December. So, ito po'y in anticipate lang ito po 'yung nasabi ni Budget during the telephone call na wala pang guidelines. Kaya po ang aming ano dito is subject applicable laws, rules, and regulations. So, 28 page lang po. So, 'yung pong graduity pay is obligated po siya. So, naka-obligate po. So, ibig po sabihin is hindi pa po siya nabibigay.
So, ibig sabihin lahat ng...
Conprocess po siya.
...bankes of the provincial government ay hindi pa nakatanggap?
'Yung iba po meron.
Ah, 'yung iba nakatanggap na?
Sino po ang mga nakatanggap na as far as our secretary knows?
Is executive daw po. Pero sa, hindi po sa ano is naka-obligate po siya.
So, 'yung sa ating lang po ang hindi obligated lang po?
Executive, as in all departments from the executive or just the office of the governor? Okay, but ang claro po ay may partial distribution already of the benefit. All the others are still pending siguro po completion of the process. Okay na po 'yun, Bokal Rehano? Okay po. Any other matters arising from the minutes? The chair hears none. The Chair hears none. We can proceed to the other item.
For the approval and amendment of the agenda, Madam Presiding Officer, for the messages and correspondence from the governor, we have two items, but we have one item certified as urgent. Is a letter from the governor with regards to the Palu Up pending urgent referrals of the joint venture agreement for the smart solar microgrid power supply. And I am suggesting that this be included in the agenda for today's session under the messages and correspondence from the governor. From the communications and petitions, we have six items for the municipal ordinances. For the review of the board, we have five items and different sub items. For the proposed ordinance, we have one item. For the proposed resolution, we have seven items and we have already acted upon the first item. And for the committee report, we don't have any. For the calendar of business, we have one under unfinished business and we don't have any item for business for the day as well as the unassigned business. Madam Presiding Officer, move for the approval of today's agenda as amended. I so move.
The motion from the Chair of the Committee on Rules to approve the agenda as amended, there's only one additional...
Yes, Madam Presiding.
Only one additional inclusion is now approved.
Presiding Officer, we don't have any privileged speech for today's session as well as the question hour. Madam Presiding Officer, we don't have any committee report for today's session. For the calendar of business, may I ask a secretary to please read Proposed Ordinance Number 16-19 under unfinished business?
For Proposed Ordinance Number 16-19 entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Honorable Governor Presbytero J. Velasco Jr. to Initiate Expropriation Proceedings Before the Regional Trial Court, RTC, Against the Owner of Flats in Barangay Masiga and Liptangan, Gasan, Marinduke, Who Rejected the Offer and Refused to Enter into a Deducted Sale with the Provincial Government of Marinduke PJM Relative to the Marinduke Airport Extension or Expansion Project, Authored by Honorable J., Honorable J. Leva III, Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, Laws, and Ordinances.
What is the pleasure of the sponsoring committee chair?
Madam Presiding Officer, in light of the development that was an output of the caucus with the governor, I move that this item be referred back to the committee where it is originated, particularly the Committee on Rules, Laws, and Ordinances and the Committee on Land Use.
This said, proposed ordinance is now being referred back to the joint committees as mentioned with advice that may the two concerned committees be able to render the necessary report as soon as possible.
Yes, Madam Chair. For the business for the day, the first item in the business for the day is the letter from the governor requesting legislative authority to enter into and execute as a memorandum of agreement by and between the provincial government of Marinduke and the Marinduke State College. May I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Education?
The honorable gentleman from Santa Cruz, Honorable Danny Redd is recognized.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the approval, I move for the approval granting authority to enter into, execute, and sign memorandum of agreement, MOWA, by and between the provincial government of Marinduke and the Marinduke State College relative to the implementation of work immersion program via face-to-face for the senior high school student in the province, Madam Presiding Officer.
Is there any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Rehano, Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Leva. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion for the approval of the resolution granting authority to Honorable Presbytero Velasco Jr. to enter into, execute, and sign memorandum of agreement by and between the provincial government of Marinduke and the Marinduke State College relative to the implementation of work immersion program via face-to-face for the senior high school students in the province is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be recognized?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, considering the Resolution Number 2022-552 of the Sangguniang Pandalawigan of Bukidnon, this representation with comments coming from the Presiding Officer shares the idea that there is an urgent need to defer indefinitely the implementation of the full devolution of the devolved functions to the LGU local government units nationwide as a result of the Mandanas-Garcia Supreme Court ruling. I therefore move for adoption of a resolution urgently requesting President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr. to defer indefinitely for in-depth study the implementation of the full devolution of the devolved functions of the local government units nationwide as the Mandanas-Garcia Supreme Court ruling did not include such information in the said Supreme Court decision. I so move.
There is a motion by Honorable Leva. Any second to that motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Rehano. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution similar to the resolution of Bukidnon. The resolution urgently requesting President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr. to defer indefinitely for in-depth study the implementation of the full devolution of the devolved functions to the LGUs nationwide as the Mandanas-Garcia Supreme Court ruling did not include such imposition in the said Supreme Court decision is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the lady from BWA for the adoption of Proposed Resolution Number 2023-129.
Yes, Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado is recognized.
Thank you. I move for the adoption and approval of the Proposed Resolution Number 2023-129. Resolution congratulating Mr. Raniel Laserna Monteagudo from Ogpo, Marinduke for being among the top naturs, top three in the recently held licensure examination for professional teacher secondary education and commending him for his contributions and would-be contributions in the promotion of quality and excellent education in the province of Marinduke. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Before we deliberate, will the gentle lady consider also the inclusion of the word "for the inspiration"? Because the contribution and inspiration.
Thank you, noted.
So, any second to the motion of Honorable Opis Mercado? Seconded by Honorable Leva and Honorable Rehano, Honorable Mangol. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion is approved. The resolution congratulating Mr. Raniel Laserna Monteagudo from Ogpo, Marinduke for being among the top naturs in the recently held licensure examination for professional teacher secondary education and commending him for his contribution, inspiration, and would-be contribution in the promotion of quality and excellent education in the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Environment and Human Ecology for the sponsorship of Proposed Resolution Number 2023-130.
The gentleman from Ogpo and Chair of the Committee on Environment is recognized. Honorable Mang Kukang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This representation moves for the adoption of a resolution manifesting sincere appreciation and thanks to Dr. Catherine Comans and Mining Watch Canada for commissioning a research document entitled Legacy Mining Impacts from the Mark Copper Copper Mine, Marinduke, Philippines, Conceptual Rehabilitation Plan and Cost Estimate, authored by James R. Coopers and Associates. I so move, Madam Chair.
There is a motion. Any second to the motion by Honorable Mang Kukang? Duly seconded by Honorable Rehano. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion is approved. The resolution manifesting sincere appreciation and thanks to Dr. Catherine Comans and Mining Watch Canada for commissioning a research document entitled Legacy Mining Impacts from the Mark Copper Copper Mine, Marinduka, Philippines, Conceptual Rehabilitation Plan and Cost Estimates, authored by James R. Coopers and Associates is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be recognized for the sponsorship of a resolution?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the adoption of a resolution entitled, A Resolution Providing for a Term-Based Legislative Information, Education, and Communication and Legislative Advocacy Program in the provincial government of Marinduke and providing funds necessary for this purpose. And the funds necessary for this purpose is 1,000, 1 million pesos annually for the entire, annually for the entire term of three.
Thank you, Honorable Leva. This is in consideration also that it is included in our committed commitment in the Ella. So, any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Mangol, Honorable Mang Kukang, Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion is approved. The resolution providing for a term-based legislative information, education, and communication or IEC and legislative advocacy program in the provincial government of Marinduke and providing necessary funds for the purpose is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation again be recognized for the sponsorship of a resolution?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the adoption of a resolution granting authority to the Honorable Vice Governor Adeline Emang Hiles to hire an information and technology consultant and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose subject to laws, rules, and regulations.
Thank you. First, thank you, Honorable Leva. This is necessary for anytime now, we will be starting the procurement process with regard to our ano tawag doon, paperless transactions and legislative tracking system in the Sangguniang Pandalawigan and we need the service of an IT consultant for this purpose. Any second to the motion? It is duly seconded by Honorable Rosales, Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Mangol, Honorable Merci Rehano. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, at this juncture, may I move that we convert the body into Committee on the Whole to consider Proposed Ordinance Number 16-28?
The presence in Sangguniang Pandalawigan is now converted into Committee of the Whole as moved.